I watch this one behind me is not correct. So, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing this Wednesday, February 26, 2020. We opened at 7:00 PM here in the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall. We'll go through the cases in the agenda. The reason they're out of order is because last month, we had to continue a lot of them, and we continued them in the order they came up. Some continued before the meeting, so they got first dibs. I'm going to ask the board to please introduce themselves.
Kathleen Muller.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
James Armstrong.
And Shayla Delaney.
Okay, we are being video recorded, even though no one's over there. It's a remote recording, so the hearing will be recorded, and it will appear in a couple of days up on the Channel 18 Harwich YouTube site. As you can see, we only have four members this evening. We have a five-member regular board and three -- well, there's only four regular members now, but it's a board of five and three alternates currently. But tonight, there are only four of us. So while we can legally proceed, it's been the board's custom that if any applicant wants to continue the case until we have a five-person board, we grant them that right. No guarantee we'll have five people next month either. We know two of them are going to be away, the third, we don't know. Right, Mr. Capoli? We don't know his schedule.
He should be back, I presume?
Theoretically, yeah. So, the reason for that is whatever you're asking for here in the way of a special permit or variance, you would need all four members to vote for the relief. If any one member votes against it, you will not be granted the relief. Five-person board, if one votes against it, the other vote for it, you would get the relief. So, it's up to you applicants if you want to come forward. We also will, before a vote is taken, if you want, you can take a straw poll to see how we're leaning, so you don't have to make the decision at this moment whether to go forward or not. Is there anyone here for case 2020-02? The Royal Apartments case? Is there anyone here for case 2020-03? The Emulous Hall Realty Trust case, which is the mini golf proposal? Okay. I'm just not going to have you sit here, because those two cases have been continued. So, anything else, Shayla? Did I need to?
I believe not.
Okay. Now that we've got the administrator behind us, I'll have our acting clerk, Mr. Donahue, call our first case, please.
All right. The first case is number 2020-04. This is the case that was continued from January 26. Kevin M. Blute and Lorraine M. Blute have applied for a special permit to build a three-season porch onto a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The applicant pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-54, Table 2, Area Regulations as Set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 9 Idle Way, MAP 62, Parcel K 33, in R.R. Zone District. We have some correspondence to a number of the cases, but they're interdepartmental, and they will not be read this evening. They may be referred to at some other point.
Okay, ladies and -- lady and gentlemen, if you could introduce yourselves, please, and then present your application.
My name's Kevin Blute. This is my wife, Lorraine Blute, and we live at 9 Idle Way in Harwich, and we are in the process of building a three-season room off of our home. It will be built on an existing deck, or where there is an existing deck. So, we're looking for relief from the building coverage portion of the zoning compliance. The site coverage will stay unchanged, and setbacks will stay unchanged.
That's it?
Yes.
Just to add more space, when it's raining, we can sit out there. If the weather's too hot, when it gets really buggy, because we have a deck, so it's an enclosed area with windows right off the kitchen. When family comes, it's a little more space, so we're not all cramped in the kitchen.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Muller?
The only -- I visited the site, as I think we all did. The only change I saw was in the building coverage.
Correct.
Going from 18.3% to 20.1%.
Correct.
That was my only question.
The existing deck is going to remain. It's shown on your plan here. You're just building.
A roof inside.
I guess it would be the east of it.
Correct.
Okay. I think this application meets the bylaw and the Gale case. They're simply increasing an existing nonconformity, not adding any new nonconformity, and it's also not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Mr. Donahue?
I have no comments.
Mr. Armstrong?
No questions?
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Hearing no one, I'll take a motion that we close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Public hearing's closed. Any discussion by the board? Ms. Muller?
No, I agree with you. That's fine to me.
Well, the property looks -- proposed addition looks very nice deck, rather.
Okay, I'll make a motion in the case. I move that in case 2020-04, Kevin M. Blute and Lorraine M. Blute be granted a special permit to build a three-season porch onto a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54, and Table 2, Area Regulations, as Set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 9 Idle Way, MAP 62, Parcel K 33, in the R.R. Zoning District. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
We got some ink this time. Whatever, save my shoulders. Let's see. Thank you. Okay.
Ronald Elmer and Diane Buffard, trustees for Ronald A. Emmler and Diane Buffard, revocable living trust through their agent, Attorney William Crowell, has applied for a special permit or in the alternative, a variance to construct a porch onto a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-54, Table 2, Area Regulation as Set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, and if necessary, Chapter 40, Section 10. The property is located at 12 Park Street, MAP 50, Parcel P 13, in R.M. Zone District.
Okay, welcome, Attorney Crowell. If you could introduce yourself for the record, please, and whoever's with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell from Harwich Port. I have John Domos with me. He's the builder for the property at 12 Park Street. The owners live in Florida, and they were not able to make the meeting tonight after all of the continuances and all of that. It seems like we filed this months ago. But, no problem. The property is off Park Street, on Park Street, as I mentioned, and the petitioners are seeking to construct a porch on the east side of the pre-existing nonconforming single-family residence. As you can see from the plot plan, from Moran Engineering, the existing dwelling is 18.4 feet from the easterly sideline, so it's nonconforming, where it's supposed to be 20 feet. We're proposing to build an enclosed porch that will be 14.1, so four feet or so closer to the eastern lot line. But as you know, in accordance with the Gale case, we can ask this board, and the board has the authority, to intensify an existing nonconformity if you make a finding that the intensification will not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. And our argument is that this would not be such, and that it would not cause a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, traffic congestion, or the like, if the relief is granted. We have a denial letter from the Building Commissioner, who says that we don't meet the setback requirements of the 20 feet, as I've just explained, and we still will fall well within the building coverage maximum of 20%. We will be at 10.2%, and site coverage, 35%. We'll be at 19.8%. So, we would ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Muller?
Like the previous case, I think this one, as Attorney Crowell says, is covered by the Gale case, and I have no further questions.
Okay, just to be clear, we're only looking for the special permit for the porch on the east side.
Correct.
The one on the other side meets, apparently, from what I can see there, all of the setback requirements.
Yes. The one on the front facing the street?
The one, yeah, on the street side. I guess that was south side. Okay, I do think it meets the Gale case, simply an extension of a pre-existing nonconformity, not creating any new nonconformity. I thought, though, given the location, we probably want that construction restriction on this one. Anybody else?
Yeah, it's a busy street.
I thought it was kind of busy and kind of tight.
As will be done before the height of the street.
Yeah, I think we should do that. That's all I have, Mr. Donahue?
No, I'm fine with it. I think it's a good project.
Mr. Armstrong?
I agree. No questions.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this application? Hearing no one, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, second. Mr. Armstrong? Public hearing closed. Discussion by the board? No, I think we've agreed that it meets the bylaw and the Gale case for the reasons stated. I'll move that in case 20 Nash 06, Ronald A. Emmler and Diane D. Buffard, trustees of the Ronald A. Emmler and Diane D. Buffard Revocable Living Trust Agreement, be granted a special permit to construct a porch on the east side of an existing, pre-existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54, and Table 2, Area Regulations, as Set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 12 Park Street, MAP 50, Parcel P 1-3, in the R.M. Zoning District, with the condition that there will be no substantial demolition, external construction, or new landscaping in any year during the period from June 30 through Labor Day. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Muller? Discussion by the board?
No discussion.
Okay, I think we've already resolved that it meets the Gale case in the bylaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Special permit granted.
Thank you, very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Do you like another set of your drawings back?
Yeah, I've got more than you have, yeah. Yeah, it'll go away.
There's a bad one. It's taking longer to stamp the plans than to hear the application.
Rubber fingers.
Oh, I hate those. But they do work. Okay, Mr. Donahue?
Case number 2020-07, continued from January 26, 2020. David C. Fogren and Lisa Fogren, trustees for the Fogren Family Revocable Trust through their agent, Attorney Jeffrey Ford, have applied for a special permit to demolish an pre-existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-54, Table 2, Area Regulations, as Set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 12 Hiawatha Road, MAP 6, Parcel F 3-5, in the RH1 Zoning District.
Attorney Ford, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please, and who's at the table with you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Mike Ford, attorney representing the petitioners. With me is Tom Moore. Tom designed the proposed new house. And Dave Fogren. Dave and his wife Lisa are the new owners of this property. They purchased it last year. The property is situated at 12 Hiawatha Road in Harwich Port. The property, the house on the property is, I think it was constructed in the early, according to assessments records, early 1940s. And it's a tired house, and it's also a house that is not well situated on the lot, both in terms of the ability to use it and in terms of its compliance or noncompliance, I should say, with the various provisions of our zoning bylaw. So, the proposal before you tonight is brought both under the nonconforming provisions of the bylaw and in accordance with the Gale case. It is a proposal to demolish that existing structure and to build a new house on the lot. This is a design that has been done painstakingly by Mr. Fogren and Mr. Moore in conjunction with the neighbors, you should know, and in conjunction with the Building Commissioner at each stage of the design. Dave has made a point, Mr. Fogren, I should say, has made a point of keeping the neighbors advised. He brought them the initial plans, brought them the locations of the structure, and his immediate neighbors and those in the surrounding area are fully aware of the plans and have given Dave a lot of encouragement with respect to the project. So, it's something he did from a neighborhood perspective. I just wanted the board to be aware of that. So, the existing house has a number of nonconformities, as you can see on the plans themselves. The existing house, while setback almost 50 feet from the road, the side yard setbacks are only 1.6, and there's another one that's 2.5. Also, the rear yard setback currently is only 5.4 feet. And so, what we've attempted to do is design a house that improves or complies with all the setback requirements. You'll see that the new front yard meets the front yard setback requirement, 25 feet. That's also a location that he worked hard with his neighbors on as to where to place the building on the lot, because that's an area where each person kind of likes to continue to have their view of the beach and the ocean, and so Dave worked with them on that. The side yard setbacks both improve. One is 1 foot 6, that's going to 11' 7". The other is 2.5, and that's going to 5.7". So, you'll see how he's taken the structure and moved it and centered it more into the lot itself. And then, of course, the rear yard, which is nonconforming in terms of being just a little over 5 feet off the rear yard, is now 39 feet, so it will meet the rear yard setback. So, I think he's done just about all he could do to kind of bring a house, locate it in a good spot for his neighbors on the property, and also try to bring it into compliance or more nearly into compliance with all the setback requirements of the bylaw. With respect to coverage, the current building meets the lot coverage at 25.2%. It's going down just a little bit, staying just about the same, but a little less. It's 24.5%. So, the coverage continues to be conforming. And the site coverage, which is currently nonconforming at 43.2%, even though it's gone down a couple of feet, not enough to move the percentage point. We called it still 43.2%, but we kept it the same. We didn't increase it in any way in terms of the site coverage. The other thing you should know about the proposal, there were two comments that you received from regulatory boards, one from the Conservation Commission indicating it was located in the flood plain. There weren't wetlands as we commonly know them, but the flood plain is a wetland resource area and does trigger jurisdiction with the Conservation Commission. So, they sent you a note saying it would need approval. I'm pleased to say, by virtue of the continuance from the last meeting, we were able to get the conservation, and that has been approved through a negative determination of applicability. And we gave Shannon a copy of that, so it is in your files already, the approval from the Conservation Commission. With respect to the Board of Health, septic system has been designed, and the good news on the septic system is we're the existing one existed by virtue of a variance, because it was located in a location where it couldn't meet the setback requirements, and so needed a variance. The new septic system, given the location of the new house on the lot, will be fully compliant and meet all the provisions of Title V in the Local Board of Health Regulation. So, we're ending up with compliance from a health standpoint as well. The comment you have in your file is that the Board of Health does not have a concern with respect to this particular property. So, I'd suggest to you, Mr. Chairman, and the other board members, that the Fogreins, as new owners, have done a good job in planning this. I think they've brought it clearly within the standards of the bylaw, not to create any new nonconformities, and where there are some exist, they were able to cure a couple and reduce the others. So, I think it fits within the Gale case, and I think you can make a finding that not only will it not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I don't think it'll be detrimental at all. I think this frankly will be an improvement, and I applaud frankly the Fogreins for taking a great deal of time. They were very deliberate in dealing with their neighbors with every step of the plans. So, that's our presentation. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Ms. Muller?
I agree with everything Attorney Ford said. Mr. Fogren, I would agree that this was a tired house, and that what you're doing will be absolutely beneficial to the neighborhood, and I have no further questions.
Yeah, I agree. I think it meets the bylaw and the Gale case clearly. I think it will be a considerable improvement to what's there now. I commend you on doing such a nice job. It looks from the plan, the maximum height's going to be about 25, 26 feet?
No, I think it's up close to 29.
Yeah, I think it's.
It's under 30, but it's.
29.
Okay, as long as it's under 30.
It is under 30.
Okay.
Yeah, we've worked with the Building Commissioner on that.
Okay. We will want the construction condition on the time period down in that neighborhood.
Understood.
There's no choice. I mean, even this time of year, it's pretty tight down there if there's any vehicles at all. Mr. Donahue?
Your neighbors are very interested in the work you're doing down there, and I'm just curious, you've got a series of trees you're going to have to deal with, huh?
I'm not sure if there's going to be trees or not.
Am I right? There's trees on the right-hand side of the property, overhanging the house?
I think those are my neighbor's trees.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, those are my neighbor's. That's coming over from the neighbor. Actually, part of, I think, there's a series of three. One actually came down during the last storm you had as well, so he's trimmed it back, so.
I thought those might have been your trees. Good luck to you. All right, I have no questions.
Okay.
Mr. Armstrong?
Was there any requirement to raise the foundation because of the FEMA, and how high is that, the foundation itself?
13, or 12.
The top of the foundation would be at 12.5. Yeah, and your grade outside, I think, right now is rated about 10.
So, with the 12, and I understand that this is a federal requirement.
Right.
With the 12 feet in addition to the height of the building, what would the total height then be?
Because the height that, in talking with the Building Commissioner, would be from the flood elevation. So, we are under, the building itself is roughly 29.9, 29 feet 9 inches. So, plus.
Plus the foundation.
What's being raised up a couple of feet.
So, the actual height then would be?
31, 32.
Yeah. I just wanted to point that out, because I think a lot of people don't understand that that raises the height, and it's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
For being in that flood zone. I just, I think it's a good thing to discuss, because we're going to see a lot more of that, obviously, as time goes on.
Yeah, I've been working with Moran Engineering on that Richard there. So, he's helped, given us a lot of guidance on.
That's great, and I want to compliment you on working with the neighbors. I think that's fantastic, and it makes everything much better.
It's important.
Given the flood plain, there's no basement here.
I understand, right, and you can't store, I think you can store things, but it's very limited, yeah.
It is very limited.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Hearing no one, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Armstrong? Public hearing closed. I'll make a motion in the case, case 20-20, I'm sorry, case 2020-07. The board hereby grants to David C. Fogren and Lisa M. Fogren, trustees of the Fogren Family Revocable Trust, a special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54, and Table 2, Area Regulations, as Set forth in the MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 12 Hiawatha Road, MAP 6, Parcel F 3-5, in the RH1 Zoning District, with the condition that there shall be no substantial demolition, external construction, or new landscaping in any year during the period from June 30 through Labor Day. And I have a second, please.
Second.
Ms. Muller? Discussion by the board?
No, I think we've covered everything.
Yeah, I think it clearly meets the bylaw and the Gale case for the reasons stated by Attorney Ford. The board, I think, agrees completely with his reasoning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Special permit granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And we have these, if you need.
Mr. Fogren, is there anything in the old house that's worth keeping? It was just a stick-billed house.
Yeah.
You had, I'm going to give you this. We don't need this. You had a lot of imagination to risk purchasing that and.
My wife trusts me. I can see what we can bring.
So, when you bought it, you never thought of keeping the house? You were really?
Well, originally, we wanted to.
Thank you.
I took so much money, we were going to raise it anyway.
Exactly. Yep. Interesting. Good luck.
Take care.
Take care. Okay. Case.
Did you want to continue?
We'll just, I'll do them when we get to them. I just, they're not here, nobody's. I just, they're not here, nobody's waiting, so we'll just do them, go down until we get to them.
We're doing 2005?
25, 202005.
Case number 202005 was continued on January 26th. David Riddelo and Irene Riddelo, through their agent, Jeffrey Hambeth, have applied for special permit to replace existing deck of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 32554, Table 2, Area Regulation, as set forth by MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at number 7 Ginger Plum, MAP 5, Parcel G4-53, in RH1 zoning district.
Is the applicant here? Apparently not.
You wrote to?
Okay, so, well, this case should have been heard last month and sort of got lost in the melee at the end there. So I'm going to move that we continue this case until next month.
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Armstrong. So this case will continue till next month.
All right, case number 2020-8. Paul...
This one you don't have to read.
Oh, I don't have to?
It's 02, right?
Oh, wait. I wasn't, oh, I kind of slid by the other two.
No, it's okay, because I've got to continue with them, yeah. Just making note. What we'll do is we'll continue 20-2005, and we'll put it on as the first case.
We need to vote on that. We had first a move and a second and a vote.
We did. Mr. Armstrong made the motion.
We didn't vote.
We had a vote.
I didn't vote? Okay, all in favor of continuing this till the first case in March?
Aye.
Aye?
25th.
March 25th, okay.
Okay.
Opposed? All right, so we'll continue this case, first case on 32520. Okay, on case 20 Nash, I keep doing that, on case 2020-02, the Royal Apartments, Attorney Zender has filed the request for continuance. When he found out there were only four of us, he did take us up on our offer to let him continue it till we have a five-member board, which hopefully we'll have next month. So I would move that we continue this case as the, to be the second case on March 25th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so this will be continued.
I'll come over and grab both of those at the same time.
And on case 2020-03, Emelis Hall Realty Trust, Andrew Hall, successor trustee to the Emelis Hall Realty Trust, Attorney Singer also requested that we continue the case till we have a five-member board. Unfortunately, he cannot make it next month, so we'd like to continue to April. He's also signed the continuation agreement, so I see no problem in continuing it and making it the first case on the April agenda. So I will so move that we make case 2020-03 the first case on our April agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, so that will be continued.
Do you sign these? And I'm going to have them.
No, I haven't signed them yet. What's our date in April?
30th.
30?
Oh, wait, no, no, 29.
29, or 29.
You make a mistake if you doubt...
Okay, so applicant, this is, get a flash, this is case 2020-...
Old, the gray one.
Oh, this is, okay, no, this is Singer. These guys are way worse than I do. 2003. Case the 26th, right? Had to get those out of the way, okay.
Case number 2020-08. Paul R. Donovan and Laura J. Donovan, through their agent, Rick Roy of Rick Roy Construction, have applied for special permit to create, in addition, onto a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application's pursuant to Code of the Town of Howard, 32554, and 325, Table 2, Area Regulation, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, located 16 Kent Road, MAP 44, Parcel A1-24, in the RH zoning district.
Okay, Attorney Kroll, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll from Howard's Port, representing the petitioner this evening. I just gave to the clerk an authorization correspondence from the owners to me, authorizing me to represent them this evening. They had Rick Roy Construction file the application, but they wanted me to attend the hearing on their behalf.
Okay, before you make your presentation, have you seen the letter from the Board of Health?
Absolutely, that was the first thing I wanted to bring up.
And how are we going to proceed, since you've got to revise the plans apparently?
I don't know if we have to revise the plans. I have an authorization letter from the applicants saying that they're in receipt of that letter, and they authorized me to represent to you that they will return the dwelling to compliance as required by the Board of Health. So it doesn't affect what you're deciding tonight, in my opinion. You're deciding in accordance with the Gale case whether we can intensify an existing nonconformity as far as the setback is concerned, and we just won't be able to get our building permit until the Board of Health says, okay, we've inspected and that the extra bedroom is gone.
Okay, so that's, the bedroom is not going to be near the addition? Or is the addition...
The addition is not adding a bedroom.
Okay, but you're not going to change the outline of the house, the floor plan?
Correct. You'll be removing, removing a wall, whatever it takes to...
Consolidate.
Consolidate and keep the Board of Health happy.
Internally.
So it'll all be internal.
Okay, thank you.
That's your curveball. I have one curveball for you, if I may. The owners decided last weekend that they, on the back of the family room, again, it doesn't affect the footprint at all, but they want a fireplace. So I communicated with Shayla and the clerk, and I have revised plans to give you a copy of, copies of, if you would like, of the floor plans as well as the certified plot plan, and it just shows a small bump out for a fireplace on the back.
Yeah, I think we should have the revised plans.
Absolutely.
We can, we can get rid of the old plans?
Yes. Easier to get rid of the old plans than having new ones for you.
Exactly, yeah. That was exactly my thought. Okay, thank you.
And I know you don't like to have plans presented to your hearing, but this is very mine, just showing a bump out. When you look at the plan...
Yeah, it's right here on the back, right?
It's right here on the back...
Yeah.
...of the addition, but it doesn't affect the setback, it's just that little rectangle for the fireplace.
Okay. Do we need revised floor plans too?
I have them.
Oh, okay.
But on the floor plan, it shows right there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Need to be complete, here's the exterior view also.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, yes. Yeah, okay.
And the, I had the surveyor on the certified plot plan adjust the calculation of building coverage also because of the little fireplace. It increased the building coverage by .001.
Mr. Kroll, are these plans dated anywhere?
The plot plan is to the right-hand, lower right-hand corner.
Mm-hmm. And the floor plans?
The floor plans are, were generated either yesterday or today.
It does have a date on it, it's hard to read, but...
It does.
Tuesday, February...
Yes.
26, 2020. New glasses.
Gee.
Not bad.
A good test.
I got my money's worth on that.
So that was yesterday, and the plot plan says on the, it's revised, lower right-hand corner was revised...
225.
225, added proposed chimney to addition and revised the coverages.
Okay, very good, sir, you may proceed.
So the petitioner is seeking a special permit to build the addition and the deck as shown on the site plan and as shown on the building and elevation plans. Those will now have different dates for the clerk's reference in the decision pursuant to the new plans. And the addition, as you can see, will be 11.8 feet from the southeasterly lot line, and you see right next to that, it says existing 10.8. So you can see where the existing house is 10.8. So again, we are intensifying an existing nonconformity, not because we're coming closer to the lot line, but because we're adding additional habitable space within the 20-foot setback here.
You're on the microphone.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Sorry.
And on the plot plan, you also can see on the one I just handed you that the building coverage will be 22.5 when we're done, and the, I'm sorry, the site coverage will be 22.5, as opposed to, the maximum is 25%. I believe the surveyor has mislabeled that column as building coverage, it should be site coverage. The one to the left of it, the building coverage itself is, will be 12.7 when we're done, and the maximum is 15. So we're staying within the maximums that are allowed. He also submitted a copy of the denial letter from the building inspector, who said that we don't comply with the minimum setback requirements that I just mentioned, but with the Gale case findings, we can intensify an existing nonconformity, because we're supposed to be 12, 20 feet on that southeasterly lot line, and we're only existing 10.8. So in accordance with the Gale case, our argument is there would be no substantial increase in traffic, noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like, and that there would be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood if the Board sees fit to grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, if you don't mind, where it says building coverage, the second column to the right, I'm going to put lot coverage, and I'll just initial that.
I would say site coverage.
Site coverage, okay.
Thanks.
Only because he had up in the table there lot coverage, but okay, we can make it site coverage.
Which it clearly is, because he includes stairs, walks...
Right.
Shower, shed, everything.
Yes.
Driveways.
Okay, Ms. Mueller.
Okay, so these building plans, I just want to double back and be sure we understand you correctly. The layout here shows one, two, three, four bedrooms, including one on the garage level, and those are going to be reconfigured so that there will be three bedrooms, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. The site, field card, the surveyor's field card, I'm sorry, the assessor's field card, as I understand it, says four bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
But the Board of Health didn't like that, so we'll get rid of one bedroom.
And the side yard setback is increasing from 20.2 over here to 25.3?
Where are you reading from on that, Ms. Mueller?
I'm reading from this plan.
I think it's clearer to just go by the certified plot plan?
Okay, but this was submitted, so I want to understand it.
I can't claim, I can't take credit for that submission, the builder submitted that. I thought it...
I see, he submitted it off the, off the addition. The 25.3 comes off the addition?
I think that's the proposed deck there.
Right, okay.
Yes, on the north boundary line, yes.
Okay.
Yes, on the north side, yeah.
I have no other questions.
Yeah, I think it clearly meets the Gale case, I think it meets the bylaw, it's simply an intensification of a pre-existing nonconformity, certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. I think because it's down by that cul-de-sac, we don't need to put our building restriction on it, I think it's pretty well protected down there from traffic. So, yeah, I think it's a, it's a good plan. Just one little question on A1. I'm not sure what the dotted lines are below the, like on the proposed rear elevation, there's a whole bunch of dotted lines over there on the front?
I'm guessing that that's the foundation and the footings for the foundation.
Okay.
It's a full foundation there, and maybe only a half foundation under the, the part of the building to the right of it, but it certainly looks like footings...
Okay.
With the foundation walls underneath.
Could be, okay. Mr. Donahue?
They're not tunnels.
No. Mr. Donahue?
The, glad to see the shed was moved. Get it back on the property.
You're welcome.
I just had a question in regard to procedure and the Health Department. Have, have they signed off on that now?
They, in their letter, they say that they can, as long as we remove the bedroom, that they can support this petition.
So the Board of Health has that letter and they've.
They generated that letter.
So just, I'm just a little confused. So, so Board of Health has agreed to that letter and accepted that that's a part of this plan? That they're getting rid of the, uh?
The, the senior health agent, Katie Teneglia, generated that letter. She wrote it on behalf of the Board of Health.
Right.
And said that the Board of Health, once the bedroom is eliminated, the Health Department then can support this petition, this application.
Right, so they've seen the new, the new plans, so they've agreed to this now?
They've seen the plans that were submitted and they've said as long as we remove a bedroom, they can support the plans submitted for the addition.
And the way that works is when a building permit comes in, it has to go back through all of the departments.
They don't go back through them again, okay.
And they won't move it until they approve it.
Great, that answers my question, thank you.
We have to reapply. Once the appeal period on this decision expires, we have to reapply for building permit.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, if, how is this gonna work though? If this board approves it and we stamp A-two, or I stamp A-two.
Right.
Then that's not gonna be the plan that you're gonna bill to, because you're gonna have to revise it to satisfy the Board of Health.
Right.
So.
I don't, I don't, I don't have an issue with that because you're only, you're, you're really only certifying the footprint.
Right, but won't the building inspector look to this before he issues the permit? Won't we need to stamp a revised plan?
I don't believe so. I think the building inspector would look to this letter from the Board of Health.
Okay, okay, just a question.
Certainly an excellent question. We don't want any snags. I'd like to come here, but I don't want to have to come back here for this petition.
Well, and that's why I raised it and that if we needed a process to get a revised plan, and I'd be happy to stamp it without coming to the hearing.
This isn't the first time that someone's been found to have an extra bedroom.
Sure.
And had to come before this board and say, yes, I'll get rid of the bedroom.
Bet you if we did a town survey and got ten bucks for every one, we'd be pretty well off. But I'm not suggesting.
I have no comment on that, Mr. Chen.
Not suggesting we do that. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this application? Hearing no one, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Mr. Armstrong, public hearing closed. I'll make a motion in the case, case twenty twenty dash zero eight. The board hereby grants to Paul R. Donovan and Laura J. Donovan a special permit to create an addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-four, section three twenty-five, table two, area regulations as set forth in MGL chapter forty A, section six. The property is located at sixteen tenth row, map forty-four, parcel A-one dash twenty-four in the R-R zoning district. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Mr. Donahue, discussion by the board.
Yes. You said that in your opinion, we did not need the summer construc- construction restriction because this little cul-de-sac to the side of the house could accommodate parking. I wonder if that's, this is Depot to Heather to Kent. Those are small roads, Heather and Kent. I wonder if that's really going to work for the neighbors if the parking is at the end of Kent and.
But they're the last house.
It is the last house.
On it, and I, to me, it looked like there was plenty of room down there.
Okay.
And I don't feel strongly about it, but it didn't seem to me we needed to impose that this time.
And if there's vehicles, they're not going to be impeding anybody's flow of traffic.
Right, since they're down at the end there.
There is no flow, they just get to there. Right, okay.
If it was at the beginning of the street, I, I think I'd feel differently.
And I'm sure the homeowners and the builder would appreciate not having that restriction so they could.
Yeah, I just, I don't.
Go full steam ahead.
I think it's a good restriction, I just don't think it's needed this time.
Okay.
I think I, you know, as Attorney Crowell said, and I think the board agreed, the case meets the bylaw and the Gale case. See no reason not to grant the special permit. Certainly not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's right already there. I think it's a good addition for these folks. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted?
Thank you very much for all your consideration.
You're welcome.
Needed to liven it up a little bit.
I'm glad you didn't continue. We're just happy not to get another continuing.
We don't need it to be lively this month. Last month was lively enough when you skipped.
Sometimes, yeah, boring is good sometimes.
That's right. Right, you know, Mr. Headest had retired, right?
I did, yes, yes. Name was pronounced properly.
Yeah, I think the last time you came.
The last time, I was very flattered. He pronounced my name right for the first time.
We didn't want him to retire once he finally got it. Counsel, would you care for the plans back?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks. Have plenty, plenty of paper.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, when you're ready.
Uh, case number twenty twenty dash zero nine, Timothy P., please correct me if I mispronounced this name, Mr. Gerspacher. And Stephanie J. Gerspacher, through their agent, attorney Howard Kahoon, have applied for special permit to add a screened porch to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application pursuant, pursuit to the code of Towage, three twenty-five fifty-four, section thirty-five, table two, area regulation as set forth in MGL chapter forty A, section six. The property is located at six Silver Street, map ten, parcel P-four, in the RH-one zoning district.
Okay, I assume you're Attorney Kahoon?
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
You could introduce yourself for the record, please. You're not one of the painting Kahoons?
No.
Unfortunately. Unfortunately, yes. Yes, sir, if you could, please.
For the record, my name is Howard Kahoon. I'm an attorney with offices here on Old Colony Road in Harwich. Tonight, I represent Stephanie and her husband Timothy Gerspacher. They bought this property on Silver Street about six or eight years ago. They live in Cleveland, Ohio, but they enjoy coming to the Cape in the summertime and in the off-season. As a matter of fact, they're here around Christmas also. But in, and the, the mother-in-law lives, a permanent resident in Dennis. But in any event, this property is located near the intersection of Willow Street. It was built in nineteen thirty-eight and lived in by people by the name of Enos for about sixty or seventy years. And I went to school with the three children. But in any event, I, I digress. We're, we're here tonight to ask for a special permit to add on a screened porch that's eighteen feet by eighteen feet. This is a pretty good-sized lot. The only problem is the narrowness of it, although the only encroachment is on the side, the southerly side where we want to build this screened porch. And that's really the only encroachment from the bylaw. I think that the Gale case, which we've read so much about this evening, clearly applies. I think that there'll be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, no noise or any other obnoxious things. So we would ask your approval.
Okay, sir, thank you. Ms. Muller?
I visited this property this afternoon and I have no questions. I agree that the Gale case covers it.
Yeah, I think the Gale case, and I think it meets the bylaw too. It's, I guess, an intensification of existing nonconformity by two inches. By two inches, so, I guess, but it does meet the, uh, the Gale case. It's certainly not gonna be any, be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Mr. Donahue?
I think it's fine. I'm not gonna repeat what my partners here had to say.
Mr. Armstrong?
I have no questions.
And I also don't think we need a construction restriction. That seemed to be kind of a quiet street where there's not gonna be a lot of through traffic.
I'm hopeful we'll be able to get it done anyway and, of course, there's gonna be a thirty-day appeal period here, but we should have three months and I think we should be done. And I think that they'd like to use it for the summertime. It's.
This is a building that across the street, there were, when I was there, there were four or five vehicles there. It must be a building with rental property upstairs. It's pretty busy.
I didn't notice it when I was there.
Isn't that the one, Attorney Kahoon?
Um, I, 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 you may be right. I'm not positive.
Yes.
You may be right. But on the other side, there's, well, of course, there is a street there. I, I don't know that property that well, but there seem to be several vehicles, yes.
If, if there were, if there were vehicles, in, construction vehicles on the street, those people coming out of that parking lot across, directly across the street would have trouble, I think.
The, the, I, I can tell you this, the builder, I asked him to come here this evening. I didn't give him very much notice and his son was, excuse me, sick last night and his mother took, his wife took care of the boy all day and he's gotta take care of him tonight coming home from work, but, so he couldn't come here.
Oh, my heart beats for the father.
I was looking for a little sympathy. In any event, I can tell you this, he's not a, a high-powered construction outfit. He's, I think he's sort of a one-man show or very few, so I don't think there'll be much traffic.
What if we simply had a condition that the contractors have to park on the property? Because you've got a pretty good-sized stone driveway there.
That's fair.
And it wide, you know, it's wider down at the end.
Yes, that would be okay.
That's fair.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there anyone, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this application? Yes, sir. If you could come to the podium, please, and introduce yourself, tell us where you live.
Bruce Young, I'm the fire inspector in town.
That's right, yes.
The only thing there with that condition of them parking on the lot, that is a cut through with that traffic that's going through Dennisport with all that construction they're doing, so it's good to have them keep their vehicles on the property if you can.
Okay.
Because it is a cut through there. People start backing up at that set of light and it does increase traffic there. So if you, if they can keep the vehicles on the lot, that'd be great.
Good comment, thank you. I thought I recognized you, I've seen you before. Let's say, you've got your, the Harwich Fire Department on the back.
Yes.
So I couldn't see it.
It's against the wall, I don't.
Yeah, I know, I couldn't see it. Well, thank you, I appreciate that comment. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this case? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Second, I guess, Mr. Armstrong, public hearing closed. Uh, well, no, we gotta vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. I'll make a motion in the case, case twenty twenty dash zero nine, that the board grants to Timothy P. and Stephanie J. Gerspacher a special permit to add a screened porch onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-four, section three twenty-five, table two, area regulations as set forth in MGL chapter forty A, section six. The property is located at six Silver Street, map ten, parcel P-four, in the RH-one zoning district. Special permit is subject to the condition that all contractor vehicles or vehicles in connection with the construction of the screened porch be parked on the applicant's premises at six Silver Street and not on Silver Street itself. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second for Ms. Muller. Any discussion by the board? I think the case meets the Gale case, as Attorney Kahoon pointed out, and the bylaw. And I think it, I don't see any difficulty with it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Special permit granted? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, little jump here. Case number twenty twenty dash ten, Jonathan P. Chori and Susan G. Chori, trustees and all, through their agent, Peter Bernard. Cape Coastal Builders have applied for special permits to demolish and replace pre-existing, non-conforming garage. The application pursuant to the code of Town of Harwich, three twenty-five, table two, area regulation as set forth in MGL chapter forty A, section six. The property is located at one five three Gorham Road, map twenty-four, parcel R-two in R-R zoning district.
If you could introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, my name's John Chori, the owner of the property.
And I'm Peter Bernard, representing John and Susan Chori.
Okay.
And work for Cape Coastal Builders.
Thank you. If you could present your petition, please.
Sure, I think we're gonna, we're gonna start off with the Gale case. And we feel like we meet the criteria. There is, it's basically the, the existing structure is going to be removed. It's currently two point seven feet from the sideline where twenty feet is required. We're proposing to build a new structure, twenty-eight by twenty-four foot foundation, two-car garage with unfinished space above and move it five feet further from the sideline, therefore, um, making the nonconformity, lessening the nonconformity. We do not feel that this is going to be detrimental to the neighborhood anyway. It meets the, it's gonna improve the value of the neighborhood, in our opinion. And we've already, John's already gone to the historic commission and received approvals to remove the existing structure.
Okay. Ms. Muller?
Yes, I just want to confirm, unfinished storage above?
Yes, at this, at this time, per, per John's visit to the historic commission, it was noted that at some future date with approvals, they may consider finishing the space, but.
That was my question.
Yeah, at some future time.
Okay, and I wanted to say, if you'd like me to come over, I would push that garage and I think it will fall.
Don't push too far.
No further questions?
Yeah, I, I tried to see if I could save it, but it was, it wasn't worth saving, so.
It's, looks tired.
Yes.
No further questions?
Yeah, okay, I think we have one issue here because it's a garage, it really doesn't fit the Gale case. It's gotta be residential structure. And of course, this is not. How come you're putting it so close to the sideline? Why can't you move it twenty feet back so you meet the sideline requirements?
Because it would obstruct our view out the back of the house. We get a nice, it's a nice westerly exposure, we get a nice sunset there. And we went through considerable costs to save the existing house that was there about four years ago. We went through a major renovation and decided not to tear the house down and renovated it completely. And so with the, moving the barn back to the twenty-foot setback, it would obstruct our view out the backside of the house. That's why I decided to. And on the structure above, the unfinished space, I realized that when I was looking through all this, I thought I might be able to do it myself, but I decided to get all the necessary permits and it's being, septic system is being designed as we speak. It had perk tests about a month ago and a septic is being designed. And that's some future date. I'll probably do an apartment above it, but right now, it's just unconditioned space.
Well, I think the problem I see is because it is not a single or two-family residential structure, you're gonna need a variance for this under the code. It's. It's not a special permit. And for one thing, you haven't applied for a variance. You'd have to reapply for it, and I'm not sure you can meet the requirements. See, if you look under 325-54, A7 Cath, alteration or extension of other structures, structures other than a single- or two-family residential structure. And it says they can be altered of right, well...
Altered or extended here, we're just...
But it doesn't meet that requirement, so he's under B. All other non-conforming structures shall require a variance.
What, may I ask, why would a variance be required?
Because it's not a residential structure, and under the bylaw, if it's a non-conforming, non-residential structure, you have to obtain a variance.
If I put an apartment in it, then it becomes a residence or an apartment, makes, becomes a living?
It's not attached to your house. It's a freestanding garage.
Correct.
It's a non-residential structure.
So even though we're making it more conforming, we're lessening the nonconformity there?
Well, there's no provision under the code that gives this board the authority to grant a special permit. Under the code, under the bylaw, because it's a non-residential structure, it requires a variance. And we've had this come up a number of times before. If it were attached to the house, then it will be considered part of the residential structure, but you've got, unfortunately, a freestanding garage sitting there. So I think, I mean, I'm not sure you can meet the requirements for a variance. I don't think, just looking at the plan, you can. But for starters, you'd have to refile requesting a variance, and we let you do that without paying another fee. I don't, I don't think we have any problem with that, but I don't think you're going to meet the requirement for a variance. Now, another possibility is, I guess if you brought it forward and somehow could attach it to the house, but I don't know if that's going to work for you, given where your house, how your house is located.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to comment. I don't disagree with anything you've said, and I completely missed the point that a special permit did not apply because this isn't a residential structure, but this is a case where we are, the code puts the homeowner in a real bind. He's proposing to put in a garage to replace a tired building with a new building, and it's going to be a little further from the side, and the side setback's going to be a little better, and this is a difficult situation. And then we have to face the conditions of a variance.
Well, I understand.
I'm not, I'm not disputing what you're saying, I'm just commenting.
You know, he's got all of this property, and I understand there's a view and all of that, but even so, I mean, I don't see that we have authority to grant a special permit.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you.
I think, I understand what you're saying. It's unfortunate, but, I mean, I think, I think really what he needs to do is slide it back to get within the 20-foot setback. And if it's going to somewhat impede your view, I mean, that's why they have setbacks in the code. I'm sorry, but I don't see any basis for the relief. Gentlemen? I know where Kathy's going. It is a sticky work for us. It truly is, because it's not a residence, it's a garage. The current setback is at, what, 2 feet, 7 inches?
About that.
And it's going to be moved up, what, to 8 feet?
8 feet, 7 inches, it's going to lessen by 5 feet.
The chairman's correct, though, with regard to a variance, just does not attach the house, it's, there's no chance you could move it up. I mean, based upon where the front of the garage is located, according to this plan, it looks like it sits slightly back from the house.
No, it's probably about 30 feet from the house.
Considerably back from the house.
Yeah, it's quite a ways back. There's a driveway in between the two.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm looking at the line of the garage as a straight line going up towards the house. That's what I'm looking at, where it sits right now, your proposed garage. It doesn't appear, though, it's currently in, it would not be in the sightline, that's the westerly side of your home, isn't it not?
It's on the north side of the lot there.
So, biggest problem is you're trying to keep us a view. Right, you're trying to keep a view for the westerly side of the house.
Yes. That's, we did think about moving it over, but it blocks the whole backside of the house to the west, and so if, if it's treated as an accessory apartment, it has to be attached to the house?
You can't qualify as an accessory apartment. Under 325-51H, to be an accessory apartment, where it's going to be new construction, it has to comply with the sideline, the setbacks. If an addition is to be built for the proposed use, the addition shall be setback from front, side, and rear lot lines, the distance required in the zoning district for new construction. I'm sorry?
So wouldn't that be a special permit, an application for a special permit, under those conditions?
Well, it would, except that he can't, he doesn't want to meet the sideline requirement, so he wouldn't qualify for a special permit. He'd be right back in variance territory. Mr. Armstrong, do you have anything?
I agree with the chairman, unfortunately. I understand your frustration, but it's, we're kind of in a bind, I think.
No, it's just the first time I've heard of this. I've talked to a number of folks, and it's the first time I've heard of this, and would any of the new accessory apartment changes that were done at town meeting last year affect this at all? Wasn't there special considerations made in...
Not to my knowledge. I mean, you really need to get your own attorney. I can't answer that from a legal standpoint, but to my knowledge, they would not affect the situation. So...
You'd have to do the setbacks.
Is there anybody...
20-foot setback.
Well, let's see if there's any comments. Is there anybody out in the audience that wanted to speak to this application? No? All right, I'm not going to close the public hearing yet. I, I think you've got an issue here. I don't see us solving it tonight. So what I would suggest is you take a continuance until next month and sort of regroup and see what you can do. I'm sorry, I don't mean to really...
No, no, I just, I just thought...
Be hard about it, you've got a beautiful house. I love your house.
No, thank you.
Great, but I just don't see us having the authority to grant...
No, I understand.
...special permit for a garage.
Yeah, I just thought, well, it's going to, it's going to be an apartment above there, too, and I just thought that this...
You can't meet that requirement.
Yeah.
You've got to say, now, if you moved it over inside the setback, then you could have an accessory apartment. You know, if you get within the 20, assuming you meet the other requirements, you have to look at 321-51H, and that sets out the accessory apartment requirements. And there are a number of them, but you would at least get the setback one solved, and then you'd have to, you can't have more than two bedrooms, it can only be net floor area not exceeding half of the net floor area of your principal house, not more than 900 square feet. There's a whole bunch of these, but I think those would be the easy ones to design around. The setback one, setbacks are setback, you can't design it, the only way you can design around it is to get back 20 feet and an inch or something.
I see.
So...
Okay.
I'm sorry, but...
I apologize, too. I was not aware of the, that it had to be a residential structure to get a special permit for it. I thought it probably don't structures.
Yeah, that's under 325-54, the code. It sets out the different requirements, but most of them for special permits are for single-family, two-family residential structures. Unfortunately, when you get into the non-residential structures, it's almost always going to require a variance, and I mean, this has come up repeatedly for this board, usually with respect to a garage.
In fact, I think Attorney Ford's brother was one of the cases with the garage.
Right. In that one, he actually got a variance because there was no...
Other place to put it.
Other place to go, because of the, the topography and whatnot. But anyway...
Okay. Are you the people for the variance also?
Yes.
Okay.
So why don't you request a continuation till next month, and you can regroup, and if you're not ready, just let our secretary, Ms. Delaney, know, and we'll put you back till April, if you need two months, that's fine by us.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that in case 2020-10, we continue the case as the, I guess it will be the third case, no, wait a minute, second case. No, it would be the third case on our March 25th, 2020 agenda. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Muller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we will continue this till next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, but you...
Appreciate it. Do you want...
You'll have to look at it. You might want to get a lawyer to look at it, if you're really...
Okay. Well, I didn't understand the difference between the Gale case and the accessory apartment.
No, unfortunately, the Gale case only applies as to...
Single family.
Single and two-family residences.
Completely missed that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunate, but we've had this come up so often with respect to garages. Okay, so, minutes?
Yep, do we want to find out? Um...
Okay. Let's see who's still here and why. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I'm not sure if I'm jumping here. Actually, I've got to apologize. I came in late. I mean, I thought I had five cases in front of me, that that would be safe. I'm here to represent, it's case 20-5, David Radlo and Irene Radlo, replacement of a deck.
Okay, let me, just give me a second here, 2005. Yeah, we had continued, so I guess we'll have to, I'll have to make a motion, I'll move that we take this case off our continuation list on 325-20 and hear it tonight. Mr. Armstrong, I believe, seconded it?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, we'll hear the case tonight, sir. Yes, if you could, why don't you come up to the table and introduce yourself and present your, your case?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm Jeffrey Henemeth. I'm the agent for David and Irene Radlo, who can't be here tonight due to work-related things, so I have to be here alone, and I don't like that. You'll soon find out why.
We're pretty mellow by this time. We're wearing down.
Basically, this is just, he has an existing deck that's been there for, I don't know, 27 years, and it needs repair, and I looked at it, and it wasn't, I guess it'd been repaired over the years, and at this point, it makes more sense to replace it. Otherwise, you're just going to have to keep repairing it ad infinitum. So that's what we want it to do, replace exactly what's there, not increasing the And I thought, as it was kind of there already for that length of time, most of the time, we're allowed to do that, but I guess that's not the case. So I'm here to see if we can get that approved.
Okay, Ms. Muller?
I went there and stepped on the deck, and I have no questions.
Okay, the, I'm just looking at your as-built plot plan here, and the deck is going to be replaced?
Yes.
But not the wooden patio?
The wooden patio as well.
Okay, so they're both going to be replaced?
Correct.
But the shed's going to remain?
Correct.
Okay. And are you aware of the Conservation Commission memo?
Yes, I couldn't see a lot in the pictures, and I talked to David about that, and he said, the only thing he remembered was he applied to remove some poison ivy, which was approved, and this is not in that area, I guess, but he had to replant seagrass. And I'll tell you, if you go back there, there is seagrass everywhere. I mean, there's not a, it grows everywhere. I think the area they're referring to, I'm not sure what was there before, like I said, the photos are kind of vague, but they have replanted that area where they, I think, where they were talking about on the, kind of near the roadside, and there are some replantings there. I don't really know how to deal with that, because I'm not sure.
Okay. Shaila, when the building permit comes around, when they apply, does it go back to Conservation?
It will have to get approved from Conservation, and I think their memo suggested that, that the applicants will have to do a revegetation.
Right, you're going to have to do a revegetation plan.
That the permit won't get approved until...
Exactly.
...the Conservation Department sends it over.
So you're going to have to, no matter what we do, you're going to have to work out whatever is required with Conservation.
I think he's open, he doesn't have a problem with that kind of thing, from what I can tell.
Okay. Mr. Donahue?
No, I think we touched upon the necessary items.
I agree, no questions.
Anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, all right, public hearing closed. Well, we, I guess we got to, we keep forgetting that, yeah.
You have to vote, yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, public hearing closed. I will move in case 2020-05 that the board grant a special permit to David and Irene Radlo to replace an existing deck and wooden patio of a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54 and Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 7 Ginger Plum Lane, map 5, parcel G4-53, in the RH1 zoning district. And I also think on this, wait a minute, what case is this?
It's 2010.
It's 2010. Okay, I don't think we need the condition. I don't have that there, but you will, I won't make it a condition, because you're going to have to go anyway to the Conservation Commission. Second on the motion?
Second.
All right, discussion by the board? I think this is a residential structure that meets the Gale case and the bylaw. It's not even going to intensify an existing nonconformity, I don't think, since it's going to be in the same footprint, but I think it does meet the requirements of the Gale case, and we should grant a special permit. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
Thank you very much.
This is a...
Thank you.
We had papers that indicate this is a $40,000 job.
Sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry for the homeowners, but...
Not our 40.
I am, too, believe me. I'm a homeowner.
So I will create a decision, I'll send that out, and I'll have details as to the procedure that happens.
Okay. I did talk to the contractor before, and I was told they would sign off because...
But I mean, in terms of, you'll have to reapply to build a permit after the appeal period is over.
All right.
14 days to write the decision, and then 20 days, the appearance. And then I send out, send to the...
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we still have some people in the audience. Any further business from the public?
No, it's not business. My name's Brian Sullivan, a recent member of Sheila and the town selectmen on my application to become an alternate board member, and I came by today to interview you.
Okay, I, is it Brian?
Brian Sullivan.
Brian, okay. Well, welcome. I guess your paperwork, we don't have anything to do with it.
I just wanted to keep my...
Okay, goes over to the select people.
Just wanted to see if he'd like you.
He's not going to come back now.
We currently have one regular board position open, and I don't know what the selectmen are doing with that.
I interviewed for it, but I haven't heard anything.
I don't know what they're doing. I asked them to interview Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Coppoli, and I know they have your application because I made sure, I coordinated with our liaison, Mr. Ballantyne, but I haven't heard anything further. He was going to have the board interview you and Mike, and I don't know about you, Brian. They do their own thing, and sometimes they tell me, but usually not. I find out from Shayla.
I thought they would discuss it last night at their meeting, but I don't think they did, so I don't...
I don't know. If I don't hear, you know, before the next meeting, I'll go back to Larry Ballantyne again, trying to nudge him forward, but he's got to nudge. I think there's two people on the interviewing committee, so...
I know that Attorney Coppoli came in to interview...
Okay.
Last week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thursday.
Well, hopefully, you know, you'll be hearing.
Things move slowly.
Oh, no, no, I told you I'd be at this meeting, and I wanted to come by and say hi.
Great. Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
Best of luck.
Yeah. Okay, anyway...
Wait, Dave?
I came here to speak to the Royal Apartments, and I figured I'd stay and learn something.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you for your interest.
We're here every month. Sometimes it's more entertaining than others. Tonight was...
I've been to a few that were...
Tonight was pretty quiet, but when we, when we hear the two big cases, it'll be a little livelier.
Were you here last month, sir?
No, I wasn't. I was at the planning board.
Yeah, I can, I think we'll see a lot more public interest based upon the last meeting, people that showed up for the royal case and the mini-golf case.
Every seat was filled, and there were people standing.
Yeah. Almost like a 40B. Okay, we need to approve the minutes from the January 26, 2020 meeting. I had one small correction just on a reference to the lighting section of the bylaw that was referenced in one of the discussions, so we just corrected that. Did anyone else have any comments on the minutes? No. All right, with that minor correction, I'll move that we approve the minutes as corrected.
Second.
Second, Mr. Armstrong, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, minutes approved. Any new business?
Um, I think I've been so busy. I think, no, I send a lot out, and I'm hoping that it's not too much, but as stuff comes to me, I send it to you so that you will have an ability to have some information in advance, if ever that gets to be a problem. It's coming as it comes to me, so, again, I wrote in the agenda for this month, I'll do it again next month, asking people to bring information in by the Monday prior or else it might not get to be a part of the record on time. I just want to make that kind of a regular thing so that, you know, especially with these big cases, there are so many comments. And if I have people that are sending me emails as last time at 3:50 on the Wednesday evening, I don't think that those, I can't do cartwheels that late in the day.
Right.
You know, and so it's hard to get it all out to you, and you folks won't even necessarily read your emails. So I want to make that a regular requirement, if that's okay with the board.
Yes.
Yes, and I think I looked at it, but that was last month, and I don't remember what I had for breakfast today, so how could I remember back?
Breakfast of champions.
But I thought in our rules and regulations, we had a time by which things had to be filed.
And I'm usually very lenient on it because I happen to be here in the building when people come by, but I'd like to have a little more teeth in the requirement that says it may not get in.
Well, I'm pretty sure, I'm not going to put my finger on it now, but I'm pretty sure we have a procedure by which they're supposed to file, or maybe it's on the application itself. Now I don't remember. We have a time requirement sometime, someplace, I know. Prior to the public here. Well, I'll look, but yes, we do need a time requirement because after a certain point in the day, depending on what's going on before the meeting, I don't have time to go run up and boot up the computer and...
And I don't have time, you know, necessarily to hit the printer for the, you know, however many copies I need and then put them before you that evening. So, yeah, I'd like to be able to put that on there.
Now, to save you some aggravation and grief, don't resend anything you've already sent us, like next month when the royal comes up. We've already had a ton of, just anything that was filed since the last hearing, don't resend.
Okay, there was a recent, I want to make sure everybody got the recent treatise on lead paint.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that was fine, anything that comes in, you know, since the last meeting, but don't resend.
Got it. I won't.
It's just extra work for you and actually more confusing because then I've got to go back and see if I've already read it or whatnot.
Shayla, isn't the, is the lead paint issue for the Health Department rather than for us?
Exactly.
Yes.
It's nothing that should...
Not our issue.
Okay, in addition, in the future, and I'm wondering if we might move toward this, I actually can scan and put into my filings in our system the documents. So we have a system, which may or may not be changing to a new system, whereby all of the applications go into a database, and it's actually a system. It speaks a lot, a lot of different levels. It's a bookkeeping system as well. So when I have a case, you know, one Bank Street, I go into my computer, I add it in, then I scan documents, and I can put it in there. I can, in any case, there is a public access to that, which if I were to give you at some point a one-page treatise or one-page, it's a document that can show you how to get in and see the documents. At some point over the next year, we might not need to have all the papers...
Right.
Of these abutter notices and the health comments and the Conservation comments because if you were to be able to see two days before the hearing or three days before the hearing, I'm going into the portal for this ACA portal, I can go right in to that address and read up anything that's in the documentation. So certainly that will take some time, and I can work you through whatever we need to know to do that, if you're open to it.
The only thing I would want to be able to print off it. So if there's a particular document that I wanted to have in front of me, I think we'd need to be able to print that.
I think we can, or in addition, we can always do, go back to the old way, and you send me an email saying, I need these documents.
Shayla, would we still get our packets?
Yes.
And we get the plot plans?
Yes.
And the...
So those are all available.
Okay.
And at the same time, if you were, if you went away on vacation and you left your whole packet, you could always go on to the website and go, oh, I can't remember what was in that. You know, I'm just saying, something that we can do over time. You will have your packets, you'll have, it's a seller. We may be changing from that to a different one, but it's similar.
Sure.
You know, so just over the next year, not to change things too much, but for those addendum documents.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
The memos, the abutter notices in particular.
So we wouldn't have to print all those emails anymore? Right. It'll be there.
Right, just any we want. As I said, some of them, like that one, Attorney Croll's case, where I thought they might have to redo the plans, that one I wanted in front of me so I could see exactly what, who said that. Was that Board of Health? I don't remember.
Yeah, there was a statement.
Where it should only be three.
They said they would do a walkthrough on that, as a matter of fact.
And then a reminder on that, all building permits come into the Building Department window, but in particular, if there are any of those memos that have come from the other departments, they go right back through the other departments, and they won't move them forward until they're satisfied.
Compliance, right.
So any of those that have a condition from the Conservation Department stay with Conservation until they're satisfied. They don't move it forward. It never gets to the building inspector until everybody else has approved. So it goes to Conservation Planning, the Health Department, Fire Department, and then it comes to building.
Yeah. I just have two questions. I don't know if anybody else carries these cases around that I don't have a recollection we ever completed. One was 20 Bayberry.
Is that the one where the gentleman wanted to replace the deck?
Construction project, it has to do with setbacks. I've been carrying this one around, also Lincoln Village.
That's 2019-4.
Four, yeah.
So that's a year.
A year ago, so I think you can get rid of that one.
Okay. All right, the other one was Lincoln.
What's the...
Lincoln Village Road.
Number on that?
That one there is...
If you want...
Unless they were mine that I had missed, and I haven't missed too many meetings, I generally don't try not to hang on to these.
If you would send me an email regarding those, I will look them up and make sure that we've closed cases and send you back whatever the...
All right, thank you.
Decision was...
What were those out?
One was 2019-04.
04.
Dash 04.
Yeah. It was 20, 20 Bayberry.
I'm sure it's not...
Continued due to error in legal dock, Bayberry Lane.
Yeah, that's the one.
And what was the other one?
The other one was Lincoln Village.
What was the number?
Number seven...
Sometimes people withdraw, and we haven't seen it yet. But that's why I want to, I want to check on the computer to make sure that I give you the right answer.
Okay. I just, if they withdrew it, left it, so I can get rid of this.
Will you please send me an email so I...
Sure.
2019-12?
I actually have a number on this. I may have lost the copy sheet.
Yeah, because that passed. That was on Shore Road.
Lincoln Village. Yeah, was that the one that was in a little cluster off of Route 28 there?
Raise and replace, I don't know, passed.
I don't, I don't remember.
I'll go by your recollection then.
Okay, one other item of new business, the planning board has proposed deletion of essential services from the bylaw. And you might remember, we approved all of those pump stations and the gas thing and storing the material for the sewer project under essential services with special permits. So I asked Charlene Greenhall, our town planner, why, and she said it was on the advice of council because essential services conflicted with the definition of municipal services in the bylaw.
Oh.
I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I'm going to go back because I said, why can't we, rather than deleting it, get a language revision because it really helped us? If they take it out of the permitted uses, you know, we'd have to do variances.
Is municipal service, is not there?
I don't, I don't think so, but I've got to really look at it. I haven't had a chance yet...
Okay.
To see what the conflict is, but that's something, I had copied all of you folks on my memo too.
Yeah, I think, I think that's important.
Yeah, I think we need something, so I'm going to take a look at it when I have a minute.
Standard is much more difficult.
Yeah, go back with maybe a proposed definitional revision to solve the issue because that really with these projects was very handy.
Right.
And, you know, faced it tonight, variances are a nuisance. Much better to deal with things on a special permit basis. And while we would have granted one if anybody challenged it, he would have a real issue because he would not have a valid legal basis for doing whatever he wants to do on a special permit.
Well, if I, if I could bring up some historical discussions because I remember them, back when we first heard the South Street argument, and there was another garage right around the same time, and I can't remember that address, we had a comment from an attorney in the audience, I won't say who it was, saying that other towns throughout Massachusetts consider garages to be residential structures because they're addendum, they're sort of an accessory but an essential accessory building, whether they're attached or whether they're not. So a lot of towns in Massachusetts consider them to be residential structures, and we had that discussion. And so there isn't a clear definition in our code about whether a garage is or is not a residential structure. You know, so I think that's open for the board to review.
Yeah, I remember that comment, and we, this board has always taken the position that detached garages are not residential structures because we have this come up, gosh.
And yet, we're not a precedential board.
But the one you're referring to, if I remember correctly, that was a very, very dilapidated building, and it was within the property line, there was a fence behind it.
There were two, yeah.
It was two fences, and one of which was...
No, no, there were two cases.
Right. And the other thing that arose with that with regard to the septic system, if the garage was moved to a certain point, it's going to be within 10 feet of the septic system.
And then one other point is that in the code, if that building were to just fall down, it could be rebuilt.
Yeah.
And the whole...
That's crazy.
Yeah. So coming to terms with those contradictory...
If Ms. Mueller carries through on this and she knocks that building down up on Gorham Road...
It could be rebuilt.
Be rebuilt.
In the same footprint, without an improved septic.
Dave, can I borrow your pilot tomorrow?
No.
I need to, and if you put the plow thing on the front first.
And I'm just looking, maybe, I mean, it, maybe it would qualify as an accessory building residential.
I mean, a lot of towns in Massachusetts, in fact, most of them, you'll find that.
It might, but he could not use it for, where is it? Yeah, could not use it for living. It would have to be just a garage.
So question, so if he builds it as just storage space...
Which is what he's proposing.
Right. And then in three years comes back and says, I have a building that's already built, but it's within the setback, and I want to create an apartment above. Now he can get a special permit.
Yes, I know.
Right?
Another bite of the apple.
Yeah.
Yep. We've already done that one. We did that over in the camp ranch. Remember the one that was the boathouse, it was an existing, and they took the bedroom out of the house, not a...
But it also then says under 325, whatever it is, 14Q...
Q.
Residential accessory buildings without bedrooms are not subject to special permit review, which I think gets us right back to the need for variance. It's not well-written, this is...
Exactly.
This is, we've talked about this ad nauseam.
Right.
It's very unclear. I mean, remember how many discussions on residential apartments and accessory apartments?
And the man wanted a simple enough then.
And again, if it were to fall down...
Right.
It could be rebuilt, and they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be moving it away from the setback at all.
I guess, you know, I felt badly, but I've said this a million times. People are willing to spend 50,000 or 40,000 bucks for a deck or 200 grand for an addition, but they're not willing to spend...
For an attorney.
Couple of grand for a lawyer. -a couple of grand for a lawyer. I'm not offering legal advice, I'm sorry.
I think you're very wise.
To the applicant, and I have limited sympathy when they come in without, whether it's an architect, we've sent them back where they haven't had good architectural drawings or good engineering, they don't have a site plan. Not our job. It's up to the applicant. They have the burden of proof. And remember, I was, I voted on the one a few meetings ago on the variance, and my position was, we don't need to make their case, they need to make the case to us. They've got the burden of proof, not us.
I agree.
So anyway, with that little, what's the word, not a tirade.
Digression.
Not a tirade, but a digression, I guess, yeah.
I mean, candidly, it's too old to have tirades anymore, and the kids are adults, so I don't need to. I find it informative to have these discussions while we're all here.
Yes.
Well, I would like to, I'd like us to do it, because it somewhat clears the air with regard to, I think, none of us have questions that are not easily answered.
But when we're not ending at 10:30, it's a little easier.
Yes, but we have discussed this, I don't know how many times, with different members of the board. I mean, this goes back to when Gary Carrera was chair, and John Burke, who was a zoning lawyer, and we went round and round on it, and there is no answer, because the code is not clearly written on that point.
Well, and, you know, the zoning board can suggest changes to it whenever it comes up again, just like the planning department is doing in terms of wording. So if ever, you could come up with some.
We could, but again, that's not my remit to go through the code. It's the planning board has that responsibility.
Well, I mean, if we run into the same problem again and again, it's one of the-
Well, I'm interested to hear that other towns in Massachusetts, most other towns reportedly consider a garage, yeah.
That's what I-
And you know who would know? Among others, the Fords, who are active-
And they actually did say that at that meeting.
And it might not be most other towns, though.
It might be the ones that they chose, right.
Yeah. So anyway, with all of that, I will-
Make a motion.
Make a motion to-
Make a motion to close the-
Close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, for purposes of the video recording, we have closed at 8:56 PM.